Welcome to the regular Board of Education meeting. Today is Monday, December 10, 2018. Please stand and join me in the pledge. The flag is in the back. Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, never changing, just as it is now. The mission of the White Plains City School District is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Good evening. I'd like to ask for a moment of silent reflection in honor of Ms. Martha Abete, librarian throughout the district for 20 years, Mr. Joseph Falcone, husband of Mrs. Josephine Falcone, former city council member and Board of Trustees in the Education, Board of Education, and father-in-law to our Vice President Charlie Norris, as well as the passing of former President George H.W. Bush. Thank you.
Next, if we could just have some brief comments from Board members, if any?
Very, very brief. I attended a PTA Council meeting. I attended an Eastview Holiday Concert, which definitely got me into the mood for the holiday season, and also the White Plains High School Guidance Night, College Bound with a 504 or IEP.
Thank you. I was also at the PTA Council meeting, and I had the opportunity to attend the high school PTA meeting, and I'm just really excited at all the work that our parents do for our students. Anything else?
Yes, okay. Last Friday, I attended a roundtable discussion with the Commissioner of Education along with some Board members from across the state. We had the Commissioner's ear on the topic of APPR, which is evaluation and assessment. You'll most notably know from our kids take the test from 3 through 8. The Commissioner was very receptive to our request of restoring local control over teacher evaluation and how we use the assessments, and just the whole discussion around local control. She was very receptive, but unfortunately, as she said, it's really tied to law, so it's out of her hands. It's more in the hands of our governor and our legislators. So if we really want to affect change, we've got to start advocating to our local legislators and our governor. But the Commissioner seems very receptive to, like I said, restoring local control and really looking at the evaluations and making sure they're assessments and evaluations that we chose. I also attended the White Plains PTA Creaffair, which was here on Saturday, as well as the Harry Jefferson Showcase. Saw some great basketball on Saturday and Friday night.
Thank you. Before we get to our Scholar Athletes, as you all know, Charlie Norris cannot be here with us tonight due to the passing of his father-in-law. The Board and Cabinet Superintendent, we've all conveyed the collective prayers and thoughts of all of us in the White Plains community to him and his family. So next, we'll move right into the recognition of Scholar Athletes.
Thanks, Dr. Rick and the Board, for giving us the opportunity to brag about our student athletes, our Fall Athletes for earning Scholar Athletes. I'll read a quick description of what it... Actually, it's funny, I'm standing over there with Principal Doherty. Can you hear all right with the microphone? And our cheerleaders are over here doing homework, so that's why they're here tonight. So to qualify as a Scholar Athlete team, 75% of the team's roster must have an average GPA of 90 or above. All student athletes on the team who earned an individual GPA of 90 or above are considered Scholar Athlete individuals. If a team did not qualify for the award, student athletes who earned over 90 are considered and recognized as Scholar Athletes by New York State Public High School Athletic Association. So we had an outstanding fall. I love the league championships and the titles and the all-league and the all-section individual awards that our kids get. This is one of the biggest things that we do in the athletic department. This fall, we had 188 students. We get over 90 average in the fall. Our first team to come up is our cheerleading team, and as Coach Telesco comes up. Last night, they were in Pennsylvania. They got back late last night, and they earned a bid to compete in Nationals, so we're going to be working out the details there. But the girls did an outstanding season, and she has some individual Scholar Athletes to welcome us.
Good evening, everyone. If you ever come to a football game here at the high school, you will have seen the most enthusiastic group of cheerleaders. We decided to use our strengths and compete in a new division called Game Day, which scores a team's ability to lead a crowd. This involves precision, accuracy, and stamina. Tonight, I am proud to award four athletes who took their dedication into the classroom. In addition to athletic excellence, they also work towards mastery of academic excellence. I am proud to present cheerleading Scholar Athletes Sophia Perret, who couldn't be here and Jawal Wilson.
So my first 10 emails today were the 10 coaches asking, can I go first? Can I go first? Can I be the first one? We have the most kids. I'm going in alphabetical order tonight, so sorry for the volleyball, tennis, and swimming teams. Our next team, Holy Cross Country, 49 students, New York State Public High School Scholar Athletes. And then Carlos Agudelo is here. He's our Girls' Cross Country Coach. The Boys' Coach, Coach Singleton, 100% of their team made the Scholar Athlete. They used 100% of their roster to qualify. And the Girls' Cross Country Team. So both of these two teams won the team awards as well. The Girls' Cross Country Team is much smaller. They have 13 Scholar Athletes. Congratulations to both.
Coach Agudelo and I would be the first to admit that they did not inherit this from us. All right? They're brilliant. So 49 names to be called. Could the Boys' Cross Country Team line up over here, please? We have three of them here. No, here's a couple more. Here's a couple more. All right, first of all, this big group of 49 amassed 60 A minuses, 102 As, and 93 A pluses as a group. Louis Frossi, who is one of two with the highest average, 98.75, Luke Leoni, another senior, All right, so that's the Boys' Cross Country Team.
Good evening. It is now my honor to introduce the Girls' Scholar Athlete Team. We had 13 of our 18 members have over 90 average. Next up, Team Captain Lisa Berg, another one of our Team Captains, Lauren Cassidy. I know her mom's going to be upset by the way I pronounce her last name. It's Canadian. Team Captain Anya Hunt, another one of our Team Captains, Isabella Cat, Team Captain Beyonce Kirindongo, and our top newcomer on the field and highest GPA freshman Rena Steganelli. Thank you. One more big round of applause for our Girls' Cross Country Team. Our next team is our varsity football team, Coach Lindberg.
Congratulations to all the Scholar Athletes. I know that we recognize tonight the athletes that have over a 90 average, but just some stats for the football. We did have 30 student athletes that had... 30 out of 33 on the varsity that had over an 80 average, which is pretty good. And then we did have 25 have over an 85 average. So we're doing well. We're getting close to being one of the Scholar Athlete Teams, so good job, guys. So tonight, we have Ben Finkel, I know I saw him. And another young man who's not able to be here right now is Caleb Gillan. Congratulations to all, guys. The next team won the team award. 12 of their 14 members had over a 90 average is our Girls' Field Hockey Team, Coach Andy Graham.
Hi, everyone. First, I'd like to congratulate all the student athletes here tonight. Not only are you able to compete at a varsity level, but you're doing it with maintaining really impressive GPAs. So congratulations to everyone. I am particularly proud of my field hockey players. We had an incredibly competitive season, and we were able to keep up with the top teams, not only in our league but the whole section, as we made it to sectionalist for a second year in a row. So congratulations, girls. Sarah Mello, not you. Anna Chakrak, Alexa Donahoe, Meg Fiore, Sophia Emmert, Julia Ricky, Calum Angana, Jolie O'Rourke, Anna Chakrak, and Izzy San Marino, our captains. Thank you.
One more round of applause for our Girls' Varsity Field Hockey Team. Next up, this team, before I tell you who it is, my first year here, they won two games. My second year here, they won three games. Third year here, they won seven games. And this year, in Coach's third season, they were league champions. They were undefeated in their league. They won 11 games. I think they were 11, 5, and 1. They had an amazing quarterfinal playoff game here. It wasn't amazing because we lost, but it was an overtime game where against one of our rivals, and we were right there, we lost 2-1 in overtime. But double overtime, correct. A very cold day out, and you remember that. But this team has been doing great on the field, but also 23... 100% of the team is over 90 average. So all 23 girls. The Girls' Varsity Soccer Team led by English T-shirt, Coach Megan Chase.
Congratulations, girls. Each year, you continue to amaze me, inspire me with your work ethic. Not only were we league champs, but 75% of you were over a 90 average, so I'm so proud of each of you. We're going to start with... Okay, I'll switch it. Okay, our captain, Winter Thompson, Dalva Del Castillo,
Great job, girl soccer. Next up is Coach Giggly, Coach Lambert, Varsity Boys Soccer. The Varsity Boys Soccer is always a very, very competitive team. Our biggest goal moving forward is our academics, and each year, they get a couple more guys over 90 average, and we keep climbing. We're getting there under the leadership of Coach Giggly and Coach Lambert. Jack.
Thank you, Matt. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to all the athletes, the coaches, and most of all, all of your parents for the great support you give your kids all year long. We had a good season this year, and like Matt says, we increased from last year a number to the boys, the more academic, and we hope to grow. First guy to call is our senior, Evie Pardo. Ladies and gentlemen, four years captain, varsity starter, four years, two years, made it all sessional, and honorable mention Frankie Tapia, who'll be missing very soon. Carl, I believe that's four years, yeah, every year. It's great. Also, who's all sessional this year, Carl Fisher. And we have Warren Junior coming back. We're looking forward for him to give us a lot of work and to work whatever couple years now. Let to mention the boys that aren't here, Christopher Puelis, Samuel Velazaga, and Manuel Matiosaga. Thank you very much for all your support and good luck next year.
Next team is the Scholar Athlete Team, New York State Public Scholar Athlete Team with 52 Scholar Athletes. Our Girls' Swimming and Diving Team coached by Patty Gilmore. This team, not only 52 members, but they sent seven girls up to the New York State Finals up in Ithaca a few weeks ago.
Now, we have three athletes who had a perfect 100 average, Lily Nguyen, Kayla Shannon, and Kathryn Stanton, who is here this evening. We had five new school records this year, and we did have a wonderful year at State, but even more importantly, the athletes had 52 with a 93.53 average, which was awesome. And it really took me a long time to do all those averages. Our first athlete is Zen Tobordo, Caitlin Clark, Delanie Stellindo, Mary Lisa Capello, and the other students who are home study, I'm sure this evening. I'll make sure they get their awards.
Our next team is our Varsity Tennis Team, Coach Sue Adams. 100% of the team qualified for New York State Scholar Athletes.
Good evening, everybody. I know it's a little bone of contention, obviously, athletic, who goes in order? Before I got married, I was an O. I got married, and I was an A, so I really got used to going in the front. So given that our team, everyone made it on our team. They've made it for a couple of years now. I am proposing right now that we are becoming the academic tennis team, so we can be listed like that in the program next year. We might get to go first for once, so. But everybody had a great season. Like I said, everybody qualified on our team. We have a great group of kids. 12 kids made it. One girl that could not be here tonight is Mia Morrison, and she was one of our highest average girls with a 99.38. Also with a 99.38 average was our other high scorer, and that is Victoria Jones. Junior Andy Friedman, Junior Elena Coppola, Then we're losing a lot of seniors this year. These girls really did a great job. We have Karina Kessler, our birthday girl tonight, Elise Bedar. and Captain Joanna Felici.
Girls' Volleyball up next. 100% of the team, New York State Scholar Athletes. Last but certainly not least. As Coach walks down, they had an amazing season once again. Advanced to the sectional tournament and ran into a little bit of a buzzsaw, but had a great season. I think about 13 to 14 wins.
Andrea Texicano. Jordan Holman. Straight out of practice Savannah Williams. Soleil West. Jeanette Colong. Sarah Ortiz. The highest average on our team and we just actually recognized her a couple of weeks ago for all sectional conference, Carlyanna Jones. The last person on the team that's not here tonight, Melissa Angel.
Girls varsity volleyball. That concludes our scholar athlete presentation. Dr. Ricker, thank you very much. Mr. Ricker, thank you, and thank you for us for giving us the opportunity.
Next we'll move on to any communications?
No.
Next we'll move to public participation. The board will entertain comments from the public on any issue with a time limit of three minutes per person. Any public participation?
Yes.
Sure.
It might be a little over three minutes, but that's all right.
Well, let me just read you this other little announcement. You can, yeah, you can go up there. The public is invited to address the board and superintendent on any matter relating to the White Plains Public Schools. Please limit your statements to three minutes. Please also respect the privacy and dignity of all individuals, whether students, faculty, administrators, or others. The administration will be happy to address privately any school-related matters of a more personal nature. Please state your name and address.
My name is Josh Azner. I live at 10 Southdale Road, White Plains, New York.
Thank you.
So hello.
Hello.
I'm a senior here and I think that White Plains High School should start later. You know, I always hear students complain about how tired they are, kids always fall asleep in their morning classes, and I personally, as Ms. Brummer can attest, cannot show up to first period on time. You know, sleep deprivation is quite normal here. And sleep, sleep deprivation is very unhealthy. According to the CDC, sleep deprivation is associated with being overweight, drinking alcohol, using drugs, as well as poor academic performance. Sleep deprivation is also linked with anxiety, depression, and mood swings. Tired teens are also more likely to get into car accidents. And due to the consequences of a bad night's sleep, hundreds of high schools across the country have already delayed their start times. So, one potential challenge of changing start times is changing the bus schedule. So, I spoke to Mr. Alfonso, the director of transportation here, about the current busing situation. So, currently, the high school and middle school start at 7:40 a.m. and all of the elementary schools except for Church Street start at 8:40 a.m. Church Street starts at 8:15. The district uses one set of buses for the high school and middle school and that same set of buses is also then used for the elementary schools. But since Church Street has a different start time than the other elementary schools, the district has to pay for a separate set of buses just for Church Street. And this is an unnecessary expense that could be avoided by making all elementary schools start at the same time. So, I propose that we switch the high school and middle school start time with elementary start time. This would mean that all elementary schools in Church, including Church Street, start at 7:40 a.m. and the middle and high school start at 8:40 a.m. The district would actually save money as Church Street would be bused by the same set of buses as used for the high school and other elementary schools. Some other districts that delayed start times have saved a lot of money by optimizing their bus schedules. There may be a slight cost to accommodate the four private schools that use private busing, but this would be small in comparison to the potential cost savings. Additionally, it makes sense to start elementary schools earlier than high schools, than high school, as younger kids get up earlier in the morning than teenagers. When elementary school starts so late in the day, it can be a burden for working parents to get their younger kids to school if they have an early job to get to. It would not be a problem for working parents if elementary school started an hour earlier, sorry, if elementary school ended an hour earlier as elementary school kids could participate in after-school activities until their parents are home to, from work to pick them up. Some people that I've spoken with say that if start times are pushed back, then kids will just go to bed that much later and, you know, be completely useless because that time that you're pushing back would just be spent staying up later playing video games or something. But this isn't true because several studies at, at schools that have delayed their start times have shown that kids actually do get more sleep. Not, on average, not the same exact amount that school is delayed by, but still a significant amount, over 50% of the delayed time. This is because teenagers get tired later than younger children and adults because of a shift in circadian rhythm during puberty. Generally, teenagers don't get tired until around 11:00 p.m. and it's recommended that kids get around eight to nine hours of sleep. So, if you have to wake up at 6:00 a.m. for school and you don't get tired until 11:00 p.m., you can see it's pretty hard to get a good night's sleep. So, it would make sense if high school went along with teenagers' circadian rhythm. The CDC recommends that high school starts at 8:30 a.m. at the earliest. Switching the high school and middle school with the elementary schools would meet this recommendation. Hundreds of schools throughout the country, such as Dobbs Ferry, have already delayed their start time with a lot of success. Recent studies at these schools have shown that high schools with a delayed start time have had a significant increase in grades, attendance, and graduation rate, in addition to a decrease in lateness, anxiety, and depression, and car accidents. Although a delay would make sports and other after-school activities run later, athletes would get more sleep and would probably perform better. A different schedule would definitely be hard for all of us to get used to, but since it would decrease busing costs and improve student well-being and performance, I think it would be well worth it. Since all of these other districts have done it, I say why not? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Well, well spoken. Thank you so much. Next, we will move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Ambassador Peter Pilar. Do you have anything for us?
Hi, do you have something for us tonight?
Nice to see you, Laura.
And for...
We were wondering, we were wondering.
Hi, everyone. Oh, we're a small group tonight, that's okay. Hi, Ms. Brummer. I hope you guys are all doing well. Hope you guys enjoyed this ceremony. I did, it was really fun. So, just a couple things going on. Recently, I think it was this past weekend, White Plains had their tree lighting ceremony where the White Plains High School marching band performed, as well as the White Plains Middle School jazz band, I believe. The eighth grade band also performed at the White Plains Veterans Day Celebration, which was really exciting. In terms of arts at the high school, the National Art Honor Society is finishing up their installation that will be up in the library very soon. And that same club also took a trip to the Katona Art Museum recently and they had a lot of fun. And they went to go see some exhibits on some really crazy jewelry. It was really, really cool. One more thing, the SEED Club, which stands for Seeking Educational Equity and Diversity, had their annual Read-a-thon. And the Read-a-thon raises money, and this year they raised money for two different charities. The first one being the United Way Fund for Flint, Michigan. And the second one, this is really exciting, it's for the Wacom Foundation, which helps support the mental and emotional health of young girls in Ghana. And it was actually started by White Plains High School alone. So, that's really, really cool. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you very much. Always so many great things happen throughout the district this time of year, particularly, we have amazing performances. Our students were outstanding at the, at the tree lighting. And our concerts so far have been wonderful. We also, I think we have a concert tomorrow night at Ridgeway and almost every other night coming up in the next two weeks. So, happy holidays, everybody, and, and again, thanks, thanks for all of our teachers, for all the hard work and putting into these shows. It's really wonderful. Also want to just recognize Thanksgiving, we had a number of our interact students participating in a giving back ceremony. And actually, you were there?
Yes, I was there, yes, yes.
And it was just so great to see White Plains kids out there in the community giving back and participating in such a worthy cause. I also want to congratulate Ms. Kelly McAvoy-Giaruso, who achieved national board certification last week. She, she did a great job, two years in the making, really difficult, really challenging coursework. And we think we're going to have several more teachers identified in this year, hopefully as well. We had three sessions, we had presenters at three sessions of the Apple Education Conference just a few days ago that took place at Briar Cliff Manor. White Plains presented on a number of initiatives that we have taken place here in our schools and I'm told was very well-received all throughout the conference. Board docs, Mrs. Schoenfeld and the team have been working and we are going to be ready to roll out in, in January. And thanks for, for everybody jumping on so fast and getting ready. We're also going to be rolling out our visitor management system in January as well. We've been meeting with stakeholders and reviewing our process and procedures. We're going to have information out to our community in the next couple of weeks prior to the holiday recess so that folks know what, what to expect when they come back in all of our buildings. And it really is a very simple process and one that we're going to be happy to walk, walk folks through as, as we, as we roll it out. Policy committee has been hard at work. We have the 4000s are going to be coming out in January, so you have a lot on your agenda this evening. And we're excited to, and I know the policy committee is excited for the 4000s. So, we'll be looking forward to that in January. We also, the district is working with Weatherworks. That's going to help us to have a, a good personalized handle on weather forecasting, which as we enter the winter months, hopefully will be helpful and will assist us in getting the most accurate, up-to-date weather information. A lot of community engagement taking place. We had our survey, our community survey, our first foray into community survey returned of about 211 respondents and we're going through and analyzing that data now. We'll be sharing those data with the board in the coming weeks, I guess, after the holiday season in the winter. I had the opportunity to present to the Gedney Neighborhood Association last week, which was fantastic, very warm welcome and had a great time talking about the district and our goals and objectives for the future. We had our school nurses participate in Stop the Bleed Train the Trainer Training, Train the Trainer Training at White Plains Hospital. This is a great partnership that's allowing our, our nurses to become trainers of Stop the Bleed and we'll be able to turnkey that with our faculty and staff members here in the district. We have been working on budget furiously and look forward to presenting a long-range plan to the, to the Budget Committee and Audit Committee in, in January. And lots happening. Thank you very much to the Cabinet for, for all of your hard work and we really do appreciate that as well. And I don't think we need an executive session, I'm, I'm... Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll move to summary action items.
If I could just make a motion that we take item 22 as a separate item, please?
Thank you. May I have a second?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. So, we have 22 summary action items. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Yeah, thank you very much. I, you always do that. I do want to take a moment to thank, thank our generous community members for the following donations. $400 from St. Parthenon Church for recess equipment at Post-Road School, and gifts from various staff members for the Rocham boutique, which I thought that was a great place to do that, play on work.
Anyone have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next we'll move on to other action, and if you don't mind, I'll just move item 22 to the first. We have the recommended approval of compensation for the, for the following professional curriculum and technology development activities and miscellaneous stipends, 2018, 2019 interscholastic co-curricular appointments in 2018 to 2019 extended day appointments. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I abstain.
Thank you. Next, we have the recommended approval to amend the probationary dates of Christopher Trias, coordinator of physical education and health district-wide from 7/1 2016 through June 30th, 2019. And it changes to June 1st, July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2020. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions on that?
This is due to the new law?
Yeah.
For your tenure.
Yeah, for your tenure, I'll say. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended acceptance of the treasurer's report for 2018. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the recommended authorization to appropriate the tax surcharie reserve to increase to 2018 through 2019 budget in the amount of $730,747.41 in order to refund taxes. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Do we have any, any questions on that?
Just a comment, this is one of these that we've put aside.
Yep.
For purposes like this, so that we don't have to go out and bother doing anything like that. And it's just unfortunate course of business for the district.
Which is why we're always so sullen when we have to do this.
But remind us that when we do tax surcharies, that we have had this money and it's a free loan. So, it's not a terrible thing.
Right.
We do have to give it back.
Yeah. Although we would like to keep... All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended authorization to establish and maintain procedures for the purpose of compliance with the Federal Affordable Healthcare Act. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Do we have any questions or are there any comments? No comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the recommended acceptance of the Audit Committee minutes of the November 20th, 2018 meeting. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the recommended authorization for the President of the Board of Education to enter into agreement with Milwaukee Smith for external auditing services for the contract term, July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, as per the recommendation of the Audit Committee per our backup. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. So, this is entering, we're just extending that agreement another year and, and we regularly review our...
Well, we went out...
Yeah, we went out to our, yeah.
To interview other, other groups and we decided that we wanted to stay with them and they offered us the best value and we were very happy with their performance.
I agree. Thank you, Ann, and purchasing and everybody going out and doing the RFP and the vetting.
And we had good presentations from all the companies.
From all the...
We used proposals and we interviewed firms and each equally, they hope that we're not, who's our existing firm.
They came to the top.
I think it was a good process, Nebraska gave a very good presentation. Their pricing was very competitive and they, they won their business back by, by their experience, but also in their proposal.
And this is something we do as a matter of law, right?
Yes, every five years.
We have to do this, so, for everyone to know. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the recommended authorization of the appropriation of recovered insurance funds for the purpose of purchasing textbooks and other educational material as per our attachment. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions?
This is to replace materials that were destroyed during the flooding.
Yes. Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, under bids and RFPs, the recommended rejection of the 2017, 2018 capital project bid for high school, for the high school public address intercom system, and the recommended acceptance of the 2018 to 2019 capital project awards for roof replacement projects as per our backup. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
This is just a continuation of the work that was approved by the voters as part of the may vote, right, for, for roofing work as part of the...
For 2017, so in 2018.
Correct. So, it's cleared state ed and now you can get the work done? Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll move on to our policy adoptions. We have the recommended adoption of the following policies which have already been vetted first reading through the Policy Committee. The public sales on school property, which was a new policy, advertising in the schools, this was a new policy. School District Officer and Employee Code of Contact Ethics, which is revised from... School District Officer and Employee Code of Contact Ethics, which is revised from other policies we previously had. So these were already vetted and then reviewed by the Board as a whole and are recommended for adoption. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Do we have any additional questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll move to board discussion, and what we do have now, as previously mentioned, we're really trying to revise and review all policies. We have the following policies for first reading. We have visitors to the schools, philosophy, goals and objectives, community relations, school board governance and operations, as well as administration. These are policies that are slated for the first reading, and our next meeting, hopefully, they will be recommended for adoption after review by the Policy Committee as well as the Board as a whole.
Sounds so trivial as you read, 1,000, 2,000, 3,000. There's a lot of...
It's a lot of... It's a lot to read, but, you know, in the spirit of transparency, so that you know these are the policies that are being discussed, you know, by the Policy Committee, the Board, and the Cabinet and everyone, you know, so, just so that you know that these are the ones that are up for discussion. Unless there are any other comments, we do have Board Committee reports. Before we get to them, I just wanted to mention, and I neglected to mention earlier, that some of us were able, Rose and I, we participate in the Rochambeau Mentorship. We both? Yeah, so last Friday, we had our icebreaker with our mentees, and it's, I think it's a really good program. The opportunity for us to really be one-to-one with our students is just so rare, and it's appreciated. You know, Dr. Hand and Deb Algartner also mentors as well. So just want to say it went well, and we look forward to continuing the relationship. I think it started earlier, too, than last year, and that's one of the things that we wanted to do, too. So it's quite rewarding, and the promises you make, you better keep that next meeting.
And we do meet monthly with the students. We break them, it's the entire, it's the entire school body. We break them up into groups, and we each take a group. We're always looking for additional mentors, so if anyone feels that they have some extra time they'd like to spend directly with the students, please get in touch with the Director of Rochambeau, Mr. Paul Bratcher, and he'd be happy to work other people into the schedule.
What time do you need?
2 o'clock, and there's a schedule of dates. We already have the dates planned through the rest of the year.
Yep. So next, Board Committee report.
Well, audit met, and we've presented the group that we're hiring for external audit. Policy met, and the fruits of our labor have been presented. Curriculum and instruction also met. So incoming kindergarten parent meetings have taken place. More than 250 parents attended, and there were explanations of the Controlled Choice Program. So that was a really good, really good turnout. In dual language, the CAL report, Center for Applied Linguistics, has been reviewed by administrators and teachers. There have been multiple meetings taking place with administrators and teachers, and the district is working on developing a multi-year action plan. And there's been some very preliminary, early discussion of possibility of some new courses. So we'll be seeing more on that as well, as the budget is developed.
Any other reporter?
Special Ed met. I just want to congratulate Deb Algartner and her staff. They're doing an amazing job of bringing so many of our students back into district and mainstreaming many of those students, so that they have, they're part of our community again, and they have the support of the White Plains family and their own peers. So we did a walkthrough over at one of the schools, Ridgeway, and we visited several of the special ed classes, and it is amazing the work that the staff is doing with these kids, both in self-contained classes and in mainstreaming. So congratulations on all your hard work.
Also, just discussion on plans for the, you know, for the upcoming year and the foreseeable future, and just looking at the big picture in terms of what we hope to do with our students in the program. So it's, we look forward to all those good things. So before we adjourn, thank you, John Savage and John Shepherd. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And to everyone, this is our last meeting for 2018. We wish you a joyous and healthy holiday season, a prosperous new year. We look forward to our continued partnership in the new year. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Happy new year.
Happy holidays.
Happy new year.[1776.66]